Good evening. I'd like to call our June twentieth regular board meeting to order. Can I get roll call, please? Here. Ms. List, here. Ms. Lott?
Here.
Ms. Motley?
Here.
Ms. Stern? Mr. Wickham?
Here.
Ms. Scott? Here. Please stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the May ninth, twenty twenty-three regular and closed meeting minutes?
All moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List? Aye. Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole and closed meeting minutes?
All moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. List? Aye. Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
At this time, a public hearing will be held to receive comments regarding the district's intent to sell bonds to increase the working cash fund. May I get a motion to open the floor for the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley. Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List? Aye. Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
The floor is not open. Are there any board member comments?
You said, "Board members"?
Board members. Alright, are there any written or oral comments from the public about the bond sale? Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
All moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Can I get roll call, please? Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List? Aye. Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
The floor is not closed. A public hearing is adjourned. Moving on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Sapporo.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. A few items for tonight. Uh, one, just happy to report, Dr. Williams just recently got me the statistics on our concept recovery summer program. We had over two hundred district students complete this over the last few weeks. Again, we're looking at all these, try to cover credits, get those concepts in, and uh, had to go forward with good turnout as uh, as some schools still going on as well. Little preview for next month, uh, Yacmeen is on vacation, so she is preparing a board presentation for our committee on the new website, the app, so you can take a in-depth tour and look into that, how those two are connecting uh, with the community, and also preview our community newsletter that'll be going out to all of our communities of the US main. In addition, uh, Mrs. Morrison, uh, has suggested, and I agree, that we will postpone that discussion on the Country Post Plaza to next week during the committee. Give time for you to ask questions, do any further research, and have a more robust conversation prior to taking action then in July. And then, um, you will also be hearing from, uh, Ms. Taylor. She will start scheduling for individual one of our communication meetings or meetings for the end of July. So, just that, uh, plan your calendar, but we can be flexible too if you have stuff planned for your staying. So that'll be coming out in the next couple of weeks. That's it for me.
Alright, thank you very much. Moving on to item four point two, our principal reports.
Evening, everyone. So I got some numbers for everyone today. Some summer number fun, how does that sound? Uh, fourteen point nine one to fourteen point two six. Uh, those are the numbers that our senior Johnny Rush ran in the hundred and ten meter hurdles over Memorial Day weekend to win the individual state championship, HSA two-way individual state championship. Um, he is the first individual state champ at Hillcrest since twenty sixteen, and only the fourth individual state champion in the history of the school. So, uh, congratulations to Johnny. Yes, yes. If you're a track fan, I, there's not a lot of us out there, but if you're a track fan, uh, to get put in lane one and win is a huge, huge accomplishment in and of itself because you're out on the edge, you're not really able to see what everyone else is doing, and he just ran an incredible race. Couple other numbers for everyone. Um, we're, we're starting to compile, uh, some of our statistics and our data. Uh, we're getting pretty close to having all of our numbers in, and uh, from the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, our freshman academy, uh, right now is on pace to surpass last year's all-time high for freshmen on track. Uh, if our numbers hash out the way that we believe they will, we should finish with an eighty-eight percent freshman on track rate. Uh, like I said, the, last year, we were at eighty-five, and previous years, as far back as I can go, looking at data, it's typically the highest it was was like in the mid-seventy percent back in like twenty-fourteen. So, really good strides with getting our freshmen on track to graduate on time. Uh, our seniors, we attained a ninety-nine point nine two percent pass rate this past semester. So of all of our seniors, one student failed one class, and that was it. The rest of them all, all passed. So, um, that number, we were at ninety-nine percent, but uh, Colin Milton and John Canning made sure that I add the point nine two because that, that makes us a little bit higher than what we were before. And then finally, uh, overall, as a school, we attained a ninety-six percent overall pass rate for students second semester. Uh, so match that up with semester one, ninety-four percent pass rate. Um, we're looking, hopefully, there's a lot of things that go into it, but we should be very near to an eighty percent graduation rate this year from our seniors. So, things are still trending upwards. We hope to continue that, um, and I hope you enjoyed all those numbers. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot of amazing people behind that.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening from the Braves. I did not bring you very many numbers or statistics like Ron did tonight. Uh, we kicked off our summer, uh, Tom O'Shea, our new athletic director, hosted a summer visioning meeting for our head coaches of all of our programs, which was pretty exciting. That group came together, um, spent a full day just working on visioning and branding and goal setting. They've got some really exciting plans for some leadership programming for our student athletes for next year. So I'm excited to see what comes, the work that comes from that group as we move into next school year. All of our athletic summer camps are up and running, so it's nice to have some life in the building after everyone ends, you know, the school year ends and we're still working. So, kids coming through, we've had cross-country camps that have been really successful, um, our basketball camps, everything is kind of up in full swing, so that's really exciting. Last but not least, we're still undergoing some construction at Bremen. We are very excited. Our welding lab is underway, so it's nice to pop in there and check in on the progress to see how that's coming along. So we're excited that we will have the brand-new welding lab up and running for this school year, as well as a new space, um, a new IT space for where those classes have been relocated from. So, yeah, thanks from Bremen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, two brief things for you. Um, our boys' baseball were the regional champs this year. Uh, they ended up beating Evergreen Park to move on, and then, uh, were eliminated from there, but they were regional champs. And also, thank you to Bremen High School for, um, hosting our offices this summer, where we have our large construction project, uh, going on. I got a chance to walk through with, uh, Kevin today. Uh, it's, it's on track and, um, you know, on tiny note, so we're looking forward to eventually moving back to, uh, in, but Bremen has been very gracious to our office staff, uh, and very helpful to us as well. The Oak Forest camps are able to run over there, uh, because the field house construction allows for that, uh, so, um, that's good, and, um, thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody. Welcome to Timly Park High School. I'm not gonna use this, I'm gonna come a little closer. Um, I'm gonna start out a little bit on a somber note, but I promised to kick it up from there. So, I know that you guys are aware that over the weekend, um, unfortunately, we lost some of our Titan students. Uh, Matthew Berry, who is slated to be our junior next year, um, passed away this week over the weekend. Um, lots of questions, lots of prayers going around. Um, hats off to our counselors and our social workers, even some from Oak Forest. Thank you, Oak Forest. Um, came today to meet with some of our students, um, actually met with the family today and, um, one of their other students as well. So, if you don't mind, will you just take a brief moment of silence in honor of Matthew? Okay. That's the part I was dreading. This is the part I'm okay with. Um, so, um, for my principal's report tonight, I have two outstanding friends of the Titans that are here with us tonight, um, that I wanna make sure all of you know who they are, and to say thank you for their continued contributions to our Titan family. So the first one is Mr. Neil Hummidge. Come on up, Neil. Now, um, Neil is not always a man of many words, I'm gonna tell you that right off the bat. So, um, I first met Neil actually when he was the owner of Salinas, and I'm sure many of you have probably eaten plenty of food from Salinas over, over the years, um, until he decided to take on a new venture, and that's the SIP Wine Bar on Oak Park Avenue, which is quite lovely and fantastic. Um, and he and his family, that you will always see there, working and, and helping um, to make it a success that it is. Um, I originally met Neil through my partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and I couldn't be luckier to have established, um, not only a, a business relationship, but a, what I would like to say, friendship. Um, we've had the, the pleasure of, um, educating three of his five children, um, Emily, Rebecca, and then Sophie just graduated this year. Um, Abby and Gavin are seated right over here in the back. I said, "Boy, the three that went through Timly Park High School are not here tonight." Uh, but the two, two B Titans are, are here in the audience, uh, along with his wife. Um, not only are they outstanding kids, but this is the guy that, when you're in need of something, he says, "What do you need? What can I do?" Um, from assisting, whether it's, I know they've had pasta parties at their houses for different programs, I know that we've had different functions at, um, his establishment for different things here at the high school. Um, he has participated for three years in our Taste of Timly event, where he's brought food from his, um, establishment to let our community try. He's just one of those guys that you know is always a phone caller and text away, and it's what can I do? And again, you know, I, I do know that people know that I, uh, do have a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and here's just another wonderful example of how that partnership brings benefit to Timly Park High School. So if you haven't been to SIP, I, I suggest you stop by. It is, it is a great place. I'm sure you'll see him there. Um, and with that, hang tight. I think it's better than an Oscar, to be quite honest. So, um, I will tell you that, uh, only fifteen of these have been made. These are twelve, thirteen, fourteen of fifteen. These were actually made by a student in nineteen ninety-nine, Joey Pollak, and we actually created a mold from it so that we can have these made, and we only give them to very special people. Um, so Neil, on behalf of Timly Park High School, we'd like to say thank you.
I figured I'd call my wife up now.
Wait, you can come on up to him. Do you wanna go? He's funny, too. But really, just great family, great business, great connection for Timly Park High School, and, um, couldn't be happier to have you in our family.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you. Alright, my second one. 'Cause you know why? I just have one, have two. Um, another very special member of our Titan family, and, and I have to tell you, this member of our Titan family, I haven't really talked to in a long time, but he's always out there. And when I meet, when I say that, you'll, you may recognize, um, Tony Baranik. Come on up, Tony. Tony has been a longtime sports writer, um, for, well, Daily Southtown. It's changed a few names over the time. Yeah. Um, so, I'm gonna take, bother you guys to hear a story. Um, well, Tony was actually writing when I was playing basketball. So, um, which, which, he just, he just actually floored me because, you know, I thought he was, you know, right out of high school and right out of college, and, uh, he told me he graduated from Bremen High School and was actually writing for the Southtown in what year? Uh, the Star.
I wrote for the Bremen Echo. In nineteen seventy-four.
In nineteen seventy-four. So, um, I remember talking to him as a player, um, then obviously came back as a coach, and because I had already had a familiar face from the days that I played, um, obviously struck up a great relationship with Tony over time, um, in the coaching world. And one of my favorite stories about Tony is, we were at the Hillcrest Holiday Classic.
We were.
He says, "Hey, trees, um, how's the team doing? You know, how you doing?" And I said, "We're undefeated." And he goes, "Really?" I said, "Yeah, we're undefeated." He goes, "You have, you don't have any losses?" And I go, "No, I didn't say that." I said, "We're undefeated." And he didn't know what I was talking about. And that was one of those years where I had just an amazing group of hard-working girls, great kids that you would all wanna call your own. Um, unfortunately, they just weren't necessarily the greatest basketball players. But you know what? I said to Tony, "They, they come to practice every day, six days a week, they work hard, they're committed, they come out here, they give it their all." And, you know, sometimes it's even harder because they do put in the same amount of time, and they're not necessarily seeing, um, those results on the other end. 'Cause actually, we were over at the time, so we were, I guess you could consider, shh, I guess you could consider that as totally defeated, but if you met my players, they weren't totally defeated. So I invited Tony. I said, "Do you wanna see? Come out, come do practice, and then come coach a game with us." And he did. And, um, I would like to think that, you know, maybe people get to see that even though sometimes there are programs with losing records, it certainly doesn't mean that these kids are losing in their heart, their mind, their soul, their effort, their time, their commitment, their loyalty to the program. And, um, so Tony, Coach Tony came out, he gave the pre-game speech. Um, unfortunately, we fought hard, we didn't come out on top that night, um, but the very next game, we did. And, um, that's when the Daily Southtown was, where the Menards was located, and all of the girls got their car, they drove over to the Daily Southtown, they ran into the newsroom going, "Coach Baranik, we won!" "Coach Baranik, we won!"
Yeah, that was when the newsroom people were a little curious about what was going on. They were running to the newsroom.
We, they did. And I didn't stop them there. So, you know, um, that's just kind of the beginning of the story, uh, with us and Tony. Over the years, and I know, I can even point to Randy, um, who has an article right now hanging in his office, written by Tony. "What a good person to write about the goodness of sports." And I think that's what I remember most about Tony. He, he doesn't get into the, the weeds, he doesn't get into the stirring the pot. He really writes great articles about great kids and great coaches, and really, isn't that what we all wanna read these days?
Yep.
And, um, so, I, I'm not allowed to say Tony's retiring after fifty years. I'm allowed to say that he's gonna take a break for a little while, and that he may pop back up maybe in the winter and possibly for softball. But fifty years, this man has been writing about high school kids, including our Titans, including myself as a former Titan, myself as a Titan coach, and, uh, Randy, as an Eagle coach, will kind of forget where he was. But, um, he's done a lot of good for our kids, and I don't think he always gets the recognition that he deserves for being so good to so many high school kids. So, Tony?
Thank you.
Take your time. And the second one is, I know you said a few words.
I already wrote six hundred today.
Yeah.
I suppose I can live with a few hundred, but I don't think it's gonna be, but, I guess I can, yes. I mean, it's really pretty amazing to think it's been fifty years ago that I was in journalism class at Bremen, and Linda Profetto walked up to me after school and said, "Hey, there's an editor at the Star newspaper over there in Army who's looking for someone to cover baseball this spring." Okay. And I went down there and met Jim Stotter, and, you know, you, you mentioned that, the thing about the good stories, the good kids and all that. That man taught me how to do this, because he, he basically told me, "You're covering a high school kid, you're a high school kid, you know how you feel if you wrote something nasty." And it just stuck with me in all these years. And I always try to tell the younger reporters that come along, you know, "Look, you know, anybody could pull five items off the shelf in aisle five, and everyone will look, write me a positive story about a kid that's interesting, now you're a writer." And that's really, I've tried to live by it, I guess they kept me around for fifty years, so I guess I've done a pretty decent job.
Yeah.
I probably, like you were saying, you know, we're gonna take a break in December after volleyball season, and then, uh, but I got all these softball people saying, "You can't quit." We'll probably be back next spring and, and do some softball, but, um, I'm really proud to be a two-twenty-eight grad, and I really am, but, and I've met so many good people, uh, coaches, of course, all the way down the line. You know, me and Johnny Di Ambrosio, we had quite a fun relationship as far as the story.
Wait, we did it when we were coaching?
You want me to tell the true story about that?
I don't know if they have the time for that.
Yeah, but no, I mean, but you challenged me. You basically challenged, I, I said, "How do you do it? How do you, you're zero and eleven, how can you do this? How can you deal with it?" And you just said, "Come out and find out." And at that, that particular moment, I said, "Okay." And then I woke up and I said, "What did you do?" But it was great, the kids were great. They had a big poster and everything, and, uh, oh, basketball, side basketball, they didn't want the next game.
They did?
Anyway, no, it's enough, about six hundred, at least.
And, and just so I, 'cause I'm going to take the floor, my, my mom had to come out personally to see you get this award, along with Neil, because as my mom and my dad called it, SIPs. SIPs is one of their favorite places, and obviously, you're one of their favorite people too, so. Um, and Brandy from the Chamber is here representing the Chamber of Commerce as well. So, um, again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to recognize two great people. Um, I did forget he was a Bremen grad, and you know, the, this, well, I mean, I think we may have talked about it many moons ago, but the fact of the matter is, is that I hope this, um, also tells a tale, that if we can make those connections, he's a high school kid, and we make a connection, you know, at the Star newspaper, and it turned into his career. And I know Cory, Dr. Williams, is very big on looking to make those connections, 'cause they do work. So, um, hats off to you, Tony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those reports. Moving on to our floor reports.
This is the last regular board meeting. We receive the following freedom of information and requests. Vince Espy, Local Labs, requesting copies of all records and email correspondence to Prairie Children's Hospital from July first, twenty twenty-three to present. This request has been completed. Karen Garcia, Smart Pearl, I'm sorry, Smart Pearl here, requesting all current employee-staff contact information, including first, last name, position title, department, direct phone number, business cell, email address, and office address. This request has been completed. Mark Johnson requested the following. One, a May twenty eighteen, twenty fifteen, I'm sorry, May eighteenth, twenty fifteen letter from the Bremen District Two Twenty-eight Office from then-Board President Canning. Two, related police reports regarding the May eighteenth, twenty fifteen letter. Three, handwritten notes of Board President Ressler from May twelfth to sixteenth, twenty fifteen. Four, board photos of Ms. Marshall, Motley, and Ms. Lott. And five, detailed information about Ms. Marshall, Motley, and Ms. Lott. This request has been completed. Adam Zylzer from University of Chicago requested records of the board's votes on IASB resolutions over the past five years, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. This request has been completed. Randallin Sievelak, visiting research student at Johns Hopkins University, requested the banned books list, copy of requested to ban books. This request has been completed. Caitlin Stuhhan, retired teacher retirement group, requested all Bremen District Two Twenty-eight employees' names, position, title, years of service in the district, years of service in the state, building location, district email address, personal phone, personal email address, and salary. This request has been completed. And finally, Vince Espy from Prairie State Wire, requested any contracts or agreements entered into between the school district and vendors providing diversity, equity, inclusion services from January first, twenty nineteen to present day. Invoices, payment records, or financial documentation related to payments made to DEI vendors during the specified period. Any reports, assessments, or evaluations conducted by DEI vendors, including their findings or recommendations. Communications including emails, letters, and memos exchanged between your school district and DEI vendors discussing the provision of services or any related matters. This request has been completed. Thank you.
Vince Espy from Local Labs and Vince Espy of Prairie State Wire, the same person?
Same person.
Alright, moving on to board members. Do we have any board member reports? Alright, moving on to new business. Item five point one, Ms. Morrison.
Item five point one is the Bells, Addendum to Bells Payroll at TDS Bells from June twenty twenty-three. These items are being recommended for a full board approval.
All moved.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item five point two is the health and dental insurance renewal for July first, twenty twenty-three. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
All moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item five point three is the athletic contract renewal for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
All moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item five point four is the District Two Twenty-eight, June twenty twenty-three, surety bond renewal. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
All moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point five is the fall twenty twenty-three athletic bid results totaling twenty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point six, Dr. Boswell.
Board, thank you for having us here tonight. That's a weird thing to say, considering all of us being here. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about, on our screen over there, and I actually just realized it wasn't attached, so I attached the Word docs as well. But I'm here to talk to you about Unified Insights. It's a platform that actually, people started looking for a product earlier in this school year. Administrators in actually several departments and several buildings were independently looking for something that was going to help them decrease the amount of time that we were pulling data, putting them in spreadsheets, manipulating the spreadsheets to identify these are the students that need additional support. That was a time-consuming process. We looked at several different products, EduClima, Panorama were two of them. And this third one, I became aware of this search, was involved in evaluating those other products. And we have, we're a Power School school district, we use that, we use Power School as our main system where all of the student data lives. And I brought it to, hey, we should probably look at the tool that is similar to these others, that is in the environment or the ecosystem of all the other products that we use, and that's Unified Insights. So the goal of Unified Insights is to augment our ability to identify, monitor, and then intervene for struggling students. As Mr. Tanner talked about earlier, it really is, that is the work of many, many people at Hillcrest. But one of the things I credit them for is they've done a ton of work on digging through the data to identify why are students becoming struggling students, when they're struggling, what is working to get them out of being struggling, and then looking at like the benefits or the efficacy of the programs that they're in, or the interventions. So I want to walk you through quickly a little bit about this. Does it make sense to turn that, is it okay if anyone sees that? So what is the need? So as the amount of data we collected by our students increases, it's larger than ever. The amount of effort it takes to co-analyze the data is beyond what we can do on a daily basis. So right now, what we're doing is we're doing a weekly process where we take all of the student grade data and we put them into one spreadsheet, and then we go pull discipline data, and then we go pull attendance data, and then we go and pull data from SAT, or we pull it from master manager, and we bring it all into one giant spreadsheet. And then the true nerds in our district get to work on Excel formulas and pull stuff over. And at the end of the day, we're like, okay, these twenty-three students increased their performance, and these forty-two seem to take a step back, and that takes hours and hours of work. We have the people, but we shouldn't be spending time on something that technology can solve by having basically a giant database to look at this. Well, I actually asked someone in my department, how many pieces of data did we use to report this date even fifteen, twenty years ago? And it was like fifty to a hundred. Name, age, birthdate, and a couple demographic informations, and then their final grades. Today, we report over two thousand pieces of data per kid, and that's just what we report to the state. The data we actually monitor and maintain about a student is, quite frankly, almost infinite. Whether it's their score on this individual learning objective, all the way up to final grade data. So we started looking at some different tools, and one of the things that works for us, or that really came to why this is the tool for us, is that we're all in Power School every day. So it makes it seamless, there's actually a button you click in Power School now, where you can switch between each of the different products of Power School without having to re-log in or go somewhere else. That's going to help. We need pre-configured data at a glance. We can't, someone should be able to log in in five minutes and see what discipline looks like at Oak Forest High School today. They shouldn't have to go and say, "Okay, I want this data, this column, this column, this column." Sort it, filter it, take out these kids, all those are our district kids. They shouldn't have to do that. We need to be able to save human man hours, because again, they should be working with students and helping, go and help those students become not at risk. And then we need to be able to track our interventions to make sure they're in the right placement, and that the products, the interventions that we're doing are working, the efficacy of those products. So what's the tool? So we utilize Power School as a district already for SIS, registration, Naviance, which is our college platform, and we are piloting Schoology as our learning management system in class, and those are all Power School products. That's where all of our data is at. So it kind of made sense for us, because we're trying to make this a quick tool that people can quickly access to be in the environment we're in every day. And then as a district, we went through and looked at, like I mentioned earlier, EduClima, Panorama, and the solution Unified Insights. So I'm going to walk through, there's kind of three portions of it. These are actually separate products, that, there's about twenty of them. These are the three we identified that we think are really gonna, they're going to be net positives for us and make us more effective and efficient. The first is just Student Essentials, that is like the main dashboard part of it. They actually come with sixty research-based dashboards that allow you to look at data not only from that calendar year, but over calendar years, because all of our stuff from the past is in Power School. It can actually go back to our first year with Power School, which I don't even know how many years that is. It's twelve maybe, somewhere in there. So all of that data about how has class whatever, how has that gone, or how have trends gone over time? It looks at enrollment, special programs, attendance, behavior, academics, and learning. So it just has these kind of built-in ones, and then on the fly, you can say, "Hey, I want to see these three columns." And it builds the most useful report, kind of automatically, it uses AI machine learning to say, "Hey, you probably mean this," and it builds it for you. It also is gonna, on a day-by-day, week-by-week, month-by-month basis, it's going to give us basically like a school report card. We get a school report card that we obviously get through the state every year. This is on-the-fly school report cards that we can say, "Hey, what is attendance, behavior? What is Algebra One looking like? We have Algebra One, but what is that class looking like?" And it's, again, it's pulling the real-time data, because it has it all already in there. The last part of Student Essentials I want to talk about is actually my favorite. It's called Student Profiles. I'm calling it Student Baseball Cards. But essentially, everything about that one kid is on that one page. Their GPA over the four years of their high school career, their attendance over a four-year period. You could, and this is what they demonstrated, is you could say, "Hey, has this student's Friday attendance changed over time?" Well, it's because on Fridays, this kid, it's, you know, it's, they're getting a little lazier on the weeks, they want to take an extra day off for the weekend. It looks at SEL, and again, it's pulling it from Naviance, from Schoology, from Power School, all these different platforms. So it's going to help us kind of keep everything about that student, what interventions they're in, what we've tried, and how they're doing. So that's the first part of it. The second part is another one I'm excited about, it's called At-Risk Analysis. So everyone's heard of ChatGPT and all the things around this. This is not AI, I'm going to say that upfront, this is machine learning. It is less scary and less, what's the twenty-whatever, where the robot takeover? It's more, they actually take all of the data and they use computers to say, "Hey, we have found that for yours, based on your data for District two twenty-eight, that attendance and English SAT scores sophomore year are the biggest correlated factors to graduation rate." It can help us identify what are the things that are really, where should we be putting our resources? What are the things that we're going to get the best gain from those resources? So it uses machine learning to give us upfront probability of graduation at a specific time, which obviously we're trying to get that up as high as possible. So if we see a lower number, we have to do some work with that student. We can actually look at individual factors. Hey, attendance on Fridays for this kid is causing problems. And then also, we can set up our own threshold, hey, for, we want to see, at risk for us is students who are not passing this class and this class at the halfway mark of the semester. We can fill all that in, and it uses, again, it's building this all over time based on power data, not, you know, research that says, "Oh, freshman English." That may be true, but maybe for D two two eight, it's sophomore math classes, wherever it may be. And then the third part of it is called MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Supports. So essentially, we can build interventions in the product, we already have them running in our schools. Take FLC, SLC, math intervention, all the interventions that we've had. We could add them in here, put students in the intervention and track their progress. And what we'll see over time is that, wow, the FLC is worth its weight in gold. The FLC is bringing our student pass rate up through this intervention tracking. So it's going to allow them to identify student needs, create and track student plans, execute and monitor interventions, and then basically look and see if the interventions are being effective. So really, that's a tool that's going to benefit our students, but it's also going to benefit us to make sure, how do we evaluate systems as they go through? So these are the three tools that, again, as a district, this group of administrators, we were looking for something. It started organically. Out of that process, this is where we came, and this is why we're bringing this recommendation to purchase this for Power School for this year. So we went from a data stream to a data fire hose, and technology is uniquely positioned to help us understand it all. So based on that, I'd like to recommend that we purchase this. The price is in flux, I'm negotiating it down day by day. It's gone down some, but it is going to be under forty thousand dollars. That's where we're at today. I have confidence that we're, there's meat on the bone there still to get to, but we haven't finished that process yet.
Is it an annual cost?
Oh, it is, yeah, yeah. Almost every software vendor is just going to that, because that's where they make more money.
And this is something that Engenuity or whatever we have now are not new already?
Engi, uh, I, Decision Ed is a, or?
Yeah, that's what it is.
So Decision Ed is actually probably more fully flushed-out tool for looking at district stuff, right? So when Cory's pulling things like, "How is our EL program doing?" First of all, it takes a, it takes a lot of know-how about data to be able to find that information, which is why she's great at what she does. There's a place for that, and it's actually in the same place. We need something that's easy to use, has a low cost of entry for people to start using, that's what this tool does. And then we need a high-powered database solution, which is what Decision Ed is.
Who's going to use this?
This is probably going to be used by nearly everyone who's overseeing any of the student data that we measure. So discipline data, attendance data, which I think is something we're going to probably be focusing a lot on, grade data. A lot of people, pretty much all administrators, teachers will have access to this. Because it's in Power School, it's going to be, click, here's my teacher dashboard or whatever we decide to build.
Dr. Boswell, before we ask any more questions, can I get a motion to approve so we can open the floor to discussion?
So moved.
Second. Move by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion?
If I can just interject, the piece here that Decision Ed doesn't do is the intervention side.
Right.
So, you know, if we have ten kids doing check and connect, we can monitor them more closely through this product than the warehouse.
Will teachers have to enter in any more data, or will they, they'll just be pulling? Okay, and then my second question is, through time, this database is going to grow, it's going to be, so are we going to have to end up buying like, I don't know?
There's no usage size, or there's no need to, our use of it is independent of the size of the data in there.
How long will we store it?
It's stored by Power School. Actually, all of Power School products are cloud-based, so that's someone else's problem. Yeah, so there will be no, other than the thing that I fight every year, and I mean, a fairly heated discussion with Power School now, is the yearly uptick in cost for just all of the software that we use, especially with the past few years, everyone's looking for, you know, "Oh, we need more money." And it's like, we're a school district, we're not a business, so it's, that's the ongoing struggle, is fighting on those prices.
Well, and on that note, are there guidelines as to what this data is going to be used for?
Internally or for them? Like, what do they have access to the data, is that what your question is?
Well, yeah.
So they, with Power School, we have an agreement that they actually cannot see our actual data without our permission. So like, if I do a support call in Power School, they actually have to log into my computer to view it, because of data privacy, we want to protect all that data. Internally, we have full access to all of it, however we want to use it, but there is not a risk here. Power School is actually one of the highest-rated security stances of many of the vendors. They're one I'm less worried about than most. Yeah, it's, they have a lot of it, but because of it, they are, again, they're positioned in a very secure spot, because they have so many customers, it would be bad. It would be bad.
And then when do we feel like we'll have a solid number?
Probably in the, really, depending on your vote, what actually the benefit is, I can say, "Hey, we already have these other Power School products. Because we're bringing this one, I want to discount all of them." So that's probably where our benefit is going to come. I'm guessing somewhere in that five to ten grand total savings across all of those. So forty down, you know, that amount. But I can, we can, I don't know how anyone handles it, but it will be no higher than forty. And I, but I'm anticipating somewhere in thirty-five thousand dollar range.
Any other comments, questions? Can I get roll call, please? Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point seven, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Five point seven is the consolidated district plan for titles one, two, three, four, and IDEA as presented at committee of the whole. The superintendent is recommending the approval of the consolidated district plan for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five point four are the school year twenty-three, twenty-four Title One plans for all four high schools, including the school-wide plans for Bremen and Hillcrest, as well as the district Title One plan. The superintendent is recommending the district and high schools Title One plans for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? And then five point eight, correct? Roll call, please. Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point nine is the District two twenty-eight, District five-ten amended MOU as the transitional employment program is moving from South suburban College to being campus to the Oak Forest campus. As a result, we'll be adding an additional classroom. The superintendent is recommending the amended MOU for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point ten is the consolidated CDS intergovernmental agreement between District two twenty-eight, South suburban college, District two fifteen, and District two oh five. The superintendent is recommending this intergovernmental agreement for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point eleven are the curricular software approvals as presented at committee of the whole. These are renewals and/or new purchases. The superintendent is recommending these renewals and purchases for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
And five point twelve are additional section requests. I'm asking the board to approve the addition of five unnamed sections to be added only if necessary. The superintendent is recommending these sections for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point thirteen, Dr. Socorro.
Thank you, Dr. Socorro. Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Item five point thirteen. Press is the IASB policy and procedure information and updating service. This subscription service has two components, the policy reference manual, encyclopedia of sample policies and procedures, legally referenced, footnoted, and periodic updated issues. Press is an essential tool for keeping board policy and administrative procedure manuals up to date. Both the policy reference manual and the periodic update issues are web-published. I am recommending this item for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Move by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, I mean, sorry, Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point fourteen.
Item five point fourteen is Board Travel and IASB Joint Annual Conference twenty twenty-three. In February twenty seventeen, the Board of Education passed a resolution to revise board policy and procedures regulating the reimbursement of travel, meal, and lodging expenses for members of the Board of Education and its employees. Following the requirements of this resolution, I'm asking for a full board approval for the Bremen District two twenty-eight board and administration to attend the Illinois Association of School Boards Conference in October of twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. Move by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
No.
And Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations. Dr. Goggins.
Under retirement, Renee Mack, Greg Streetar, and Christine McMath. Under resignation, Vincent Lyons, Justin Sperrgaren, Mary Batcanton, Joseph Lopez, Colleen Mancha, Kevin Kennedy, and Carrie Maraska. Under leave, Pedro Sansone, Jack Monden, and Josh Durk. Under employment, John Kurisik, Shannon Price, John Rowley, Bill Galetti, Elizabeth Hadz- Hadhazy, Kristen Wooton, Dennis Nelson, Nate Vanderleest, Kelly Hohn, Sue Bednar- Narsky, Mary Bo- Bojenek, Ryan Calpers, Beth Conlin, Anthony Raffo, Gloria Verlana, Roberto Sarly, Carrie Stevens, Matthew Inesenti, Mike Clemson, Matthew Nealon, Pablo Flores, and Deborah Cruz Sateri. And under change of position, Jacqueline Bertwald, Nick Fieldguard, Tyler Graybill, Karen Crim, Stephen Butt, and Aaron Reyes. These are being recommended for the full board for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
All right, moving on to comments from the public. Do we have any public comments? Yes.
How you doing, board? I'm here to talk about, um, my ability to set up and protest my government under the First Arise, uh, First Amendment right. The police has called on me, of course, by, well, I have to court you, but I'm assuming that it's going to be that, courted for Dr. Dan Goggins. They communicated it to the board, um, which means that you are aware of it. I just want to tell you all a little story here. Evelyn Gleason cannot be the president of District two-two-eight School Board. Yeah, that's what it said when I read over your papers back some years ago. She forced Dr. Mitchell out, long story short, because he was a gay man.
That's incorrect, Mark, and I will not stand by, let's say that in public.
Say whatever piece you have.
It is incorrect.
You forced him out, and they even said-
He was fired by the board.
No, he wasn't.
After a hearing.
After you took the presidency.
After a hearing.
After you took the presidency. After. In other words, you guys signed and swore a notice to the majority of the board in front of a judge.
Did you know he threatened my life?
Huh? Who threatened whose life?
Dr. Mitchell.
I had no idea. I could count it from out there.
Just telling you, something you might not have known.
No, I didn't. Just like you said, I threatened your life out there.
You did.
And I did? Then why don't you give me your hearing so I can prove it?
Mark, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of us to come out and address our government is the fundamental right that is given to us in the Constitution. If you weaponize a police department against me to come out here to do what I have every right to do by two people who don't even live in the district, I'm here to protect everybody's interests here. If this guy who Ms. Motley and Ms. Lot have gets his way...
What guy are you talking about, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Allsberry. Okay, Mr. Allsberry. President Allsberry. He's not a mayor, he's the president. But if he gets his way, he's going to cause property values in Hazelcrest to drop between seventy and eighty percent.
Do you have any of that set up?
No, but that is, yeah, that, that's, but we do know that it's going to, uh, cause an effect. It will cause an effect. That's why so many people like Green, Green Space, and everybody is fighting you people about not letting you do that to come out there and zone them out of their home.
What people are you talking about?
The people of Hazelcrest.
I don't work for Hazelcrest.
Okay, you don't. You are part of this board that was backed by Mr. Allsberry.
They had him contacted us.
Okay, I've seen your, your printer, who he's backing to get on there. He tried it over at the other grammar school.